And also, Mike Rankin has his hand up.
Okay, a few things. First of all, and this is not really germane to what we're doing today, but the Zoological Society has over 30,000 people visit the zoo annually free or deeply discounted. So they have been responsive to that. Secondly, the motion that we approved back in 2018 was that if this plan that we're suspending right now was to change, that was to catalyze a new round of public outreach. At the time we voted on it, the public outreach, we were all comfortable had occurred. And those meetings are outlined very clearly in our material. With respect to Broadway, at the time, we fought for three, four years, five years to get that RTA plan changed. We didn't have contracts in place. We hadn't gone out and had people make private donations. And those dynamics were fundamentally different. But I would say, just to clarify the motion, though, we're not going to get a redesign in 45 days. It's not possible. There are floodplain issues. There are civil engineering issues that have to be worked out. If the idea is to say, let's get some new schematic design in 45 days, you might get there, but you're not going to get any kind of engineering documents done that analyze all the surrounding space. In fact, those analyses were done before this plan was agreed to. So that needs to be clear as to what exactly Mike Ortega has been expected to bring back within 45 days. And finally, if this motion moves forward, and evidently it will, I would offer a friendly amendment that the Reed Park Zoological Society be held harmless for any added costs or any losses they incur as a result of the suspension. Because we're the ones who are the moving party, and there are contracts, not theirs.
I don't hear a second for the friendly amendment. So it dies for lack of a second. Mr. Rankin? And then Councilmember Ulick?
Mayor, members of the council, and I may have missed it in the motion, but I would ask that any motion that gives the direction to suspend, make a specific finding that it's based on the best interests of the city, for the reasons that I mentioned with respect to the contracts. And just to address the issue that Councilmember Kazachek just raised, there wouldn't be any, certainly any of the private funding raised by the RPCS that could be used towards any costs associated with the suspension.
Right, it shouldn't. That's not the intent of the motion. So may I make sure that the motion maker accepts the language that our city attorney has requested of us?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I agree. The best interests of the city.
The best interest of the city.
The city. We always are in the best interests of the city.
We always do. Yeah. Councilmember Ulick?
Just very briefly, you know, when I heard the presentation from our parks folks about this first Plan B option, the cost of that is several million dollars, right? So somehow, there's money at stake here. And I agree with Councilmember Kazachek that we do need to sort out how we, what resources can be put on the table in order to keep the zoo moving forward and as whole as possible, and also recognizing that in order for us to solve this, we would have incurred considerable, several million dollars of expense in an elongated timeline. So I just wanted to make that point. I think that that's got to be laid out as we look at alternatives that are brought back to us, and what's the balance of the resources involved?
Mr. Ortega?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just going to ask that Councilmember Februs please read his motion again. I just want to make sure that I've got clarity on it. I'll get a copy of it. I'm sure it's in writing. I'll get a copy. If you don't mind asking for it to be read again, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, Mike, it says, "I move that the mayor and council direct the city manager to take all actions necessary to suspend or pause the expansion project in the best interests of the city and the associated design and construction contract for 45 days. That the city manager organize a mediated intentional dialogue with representatives and diverse groups of community stakeholders to discuss potential options for compromise. The group should meet as many times as needed and consist of representatives from neighborhoods surrounding Reed Park, state of the heart of Reed Park, Parks and Recreation, the Zoological Society, and representatives from Ward 6 and 5." Thank you. I'll send it to you too, Mike.
All righty. I don't see any other hands up. With that, I'd like to call the questions.
Karen's up. Maybe it's just still up.
Is your hand up again? Karen?
Okay, just still up, I guess. All right.
All righty, and Richard's hand is... All righty, so there was a motion and a second, and we just want to make sure that that added language at the request of our city attorney is that it is in the best interest of the city of Tucson that we direct the city manager, the motion maker amended, is the second of the motion agreeable? I think it was you, Karen. All right, good. So with that, I'd like to go to roll call for this, please. Mr. Clerk?
Ms. Santa Cruz?
Hi.
Mr. Cunningham?
He's doing all right. I think he said aye.
He did.
Aye.
Mrs. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Februs?
Aye.
Mr. Kazachek?
I'm a no.
Marrow, Marrow?
Aye. Motion passes 6-1. Thank you all so much for your work on this, and I look forward to continued discussion. Thank you. Let's move on to item 7. Councilmember Cunningham has requested an update on the collection of development impact fees under the emergency relief fee schedule. Councilmember Cunningham?
Your Honor, thanks for taking the time. Last year during the pandemic, we made the decision, and rightly so, to save impact fees so that we wouldn't lose economic growth during the pandemic. And at the time, just like at the time on October 9, 2018 with Reed Park, it was the right thing to do. It's, you know, you go with your best information at the time. And I think it was a good vote, and I stay by it. At that time, we also adopted a new schedule that would have increased, given us the first impact fee increase in over seven years since the reception, before the recession. Actually, we've been at a reduced rate for seven years, and we were, we've been at the same rate since, I want to say, 2008, something to that piece. Well, what ended up happening ultimately is we ended up losing out on $1.14 million during a record boom last year. That's really what we lost in impact fees last... The good news is, is that in part, impact fees, we've raised $12.4 million. We built a balance of $12.4 million over the five old districts and the three new districts, and $36 million in roads, $12 million in parks. We have close $30 million in impact fees on hand, excluding public city. And I can put that money to use, but I want to continue to replenish it as the growth continues. Some of the things that come up are programs like skate parks, pickleball courts, shade structures. They're all things that our impact fees can do. And even the community grant piece and back to basics reincantation, we can probably use some impact fee money if we strategically plan the program. Moreover, I'll find a looking at in loops, but we really can't do that until we have some leverage. And the in loops are a pro which a contractor, while building a development, also builds instead of finishing the development, then, then do the thing, then doing another thing in the plan, take it and execute, and be a little faster with putting our impact fees to use. Thing said, I don't lose out on another million dollars this year. So I'm asking that in this fiscal year, fiscal year, we go back to the impact, the way they're supposed to be charged. I'm going to listen to the discussion, and then I'll make a motion on that. I'm also willing to in the fiscal year, but I'm not doing that with our impact fees. I want the park ones right away. The only P impact fees, judging from what I hear with our constituents, want all... So really, I'm just going to listen to the discussion.
Councilmember Cunningham, I just want to let you know that you're kind of sketchy. You're breaking up. I don't know if it's just me, but it's very, very difficult to listen to what you're saying. You might want to connect to another network, or maybe turn off your video, just so that we can get better reception. Okay? I do see Councilmember Kazachek's hand up.
Yeah, and it's very consistent with what you said, Paul. I think you said, correct me if I'm wrong, that you want to invoke the higher fees and suspend the temporary fees immediately? The impact?
No. All right. No, that's not what I said. Can you guys hear me better?
It wasn't clear.
Yeah, we can hear you better.
All right. What I wanted to, what I'm proposing is, is that we allow the emergency rate that's scheduled to end at the end of the fiscal year of '22. We have it ending fiscal year '21. And there's a lot of projects out there that have already been budgeted and planned. So I'm willing to give a little greater here. I'm willing to enter farther, judging from what I, we, we lost one million this year. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, sort of. So basically, you want to change the expiration date of the lower fee back to fiscal '21, not '22, right? Okay, got it. Thanks. I'd second that if that was a motion.
I think it was. It wasn't made in the form of a motion, but got you, Steve. You're going to be the second. So any other have, any other of my colleagues have any commentary on any discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Councilmember Februs?
Yes, I support the motion of increasing the fees, but I also want to move that the city manager direct staff to compile draft criteria and a funding formula for impact fees, to include how funds would be used from the respective service areas, and to report back to mayor and council in 30 days, and the mayor and council review, discuss, and consider all impact fee expenditures as part of the mayor and council agenda.
I'm just going to seek some help from either Roger or Rankin. I did not hear a clear motion, Mr. Randolph, from Councilmember Cunningham, but I believe, yeah, give me some clarity and direction in terms of how to proceed, because I see there's two different motions on the table. So Roger or Mike Rankin?
So as, the way I take it right now, Mayor, and I got to switch my sound over just a second.
Okay.
Yeah. Is that Councilmember Cunningham did, in fact, offer that as a motion, and it's been seconded, which is to end the discount period for the lower fee schedule, July 1 of 2021, as opposed to July 1 of 2022. So that motion's been made and seconded. What I took, Councilmember Februs', is additional direction, if it's acceptable, is to, is the additional direction he offered in terms of tracking the expenditures with respect to the different benefit districts.
Okay. And that I would, I would consider a separate motion.
Yeah, and that way, we don't have to ask the motion maker if he accepts it as an amendment. So let's vote on the first one first, and then go to the second one.
I absolutely agree with both motions, by the way. I believe that, you know, adopting the potential assessment impact fees, starting in this coming fiscal year, starting July 1 of 2021, is the prudent and fiscally responsible thing to do. Mayor and council have been very, very flexible with the development community for, I would say, many years. I would say the last five to six years, we have really been responsive to the development community. But I do want to note that Councilmember Cunningham's memo to request this item quotes the Arizona Daily Star. In a January 24, 2021 article, it basically says that the housing market in the city of Tucson is sizzling, and that it is the best it has been for the past 13 years. This was confirmed by the Planning and Development Services Department's staff, saying that permits and construction valuation have exploded since April of 2020. I think it is only fair for the city of Tucson to collect the necessary fees to provide the residents of the city of Tucson good roads, good parks, good investment for our police and fire department, which is what impact fees pay for. And so I absolutely agree that being able to give a little bit of additional months, and starting the full recovery of our impact fees starting July 1, is more than flexible and appropriate for us to move forward and for the development community to plan accordingly. Councilmember Ulick?
I missed the order of the motions, but I just wanted to be clear that I second Councilmember Februs' motion when that comes to...
Okay. Yeah, we're still in the first piece of Councilmember Cunningham's motion. So any other comments from my colleagues on the first motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. So the second piece of the motion, Councilmember Februs, can you read it again, and then we'll have the motion seconded?
Okay, Madam Mayor, I move that the city manager direct staff to compile draft criteria and funding formula for impact fees to include how funds would be used from the respective service area, and to report back to mayor and council in 30 days, and the mayor and council review, discuss, and consider all impact fee expenditures as part of the mayor and council agenda.
There is a motion on the floor. Is that a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. All righty, thank you so much. Really appreciate you, both Councilmember Februs and Councilmember Cunningham, for putting thought to this effort. Let's move on to item 8. Time has been set aside for discussion to allow the implementation of a permanent shared mobility permit program. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to turn this over to Diana Alarcon. This is really an opportunity to make permanent some of the conversations and some of the direction that you previously provided. I think we refer to them to some level as sparklets, but we'll certainly turn it over to Diana, she can give you the thumbnail sketch. Go ahead, Diana.
Yeah, the three-minute, the three-minute presentation, Diana.
Yes, ma'am.
Forward.
So just real quickly, we started down this road back in September of 2019. We did, the current program that's in place actually expires this Friday, March 12. We did submit for tonight for consideration, the draft permitted regulations. I know that mayor and council received a letter from Downtown Tucson Partnership and Support, so we did make sure that we included all of those folks in the, over on Fourth Avenue, and also in downtown, as far as new regulations. Parking was a big concern, so we wanted to make sure. But just some real quick highlights that, you know, since the launch, there's been over 326,000 scooter trips in the city, and that's more than 59,000 Tucsonians and visitors that have traveled on a scooter. And that's an average of about 600 scooter trips a day, just to kind of put it in perspective. So they're being used. They're a great micro-mobility initiative added to our overall balanced transportation mobility system. We had some opportunities and challenges with parking regulation, and we've worked very closely with our partners on some of that regulation that we would look to implement in the new permit program. And we're going to continue to push the opportunity zones and that, having that equality distribution there. And I think at this point, what we're recommending and asking to move forward is two things. One is an extension of the current temporary program to give us time to put out an RFP for a permanent program, and then at that point, the program would become permanent. So that's really the two regulations that we're asking to move forward with you, along with the recommendations that we worked out with the community. So I'm cutting it down, and I'm here for any questions.
Great job, great job.
Thank you.
What is the motion for the council?
I'll move, I'll make that motion.
All righty, so there is a motion. Do I hear a second?
I will second that, and just want to, at least for the record, perhaps, Councilmember Santa Cruz, this might be incorporated in the motion, just the exploration of expansion to opportunity zones, as well as real strict supervision of compliance with the contract, so that these scooters that are left all over the place, there's compliance of the contract to remove them from blocking ADA access, etc.
Thank you.
As horribly stated, I apologize.
No, do you?
Strict oversight with compliance during this period, as well as reporting back on the potentials for expansion in the opportunity zone, if that's acceptable to you, Councilmember Santa Cruz?
Yes, of course. Thank you, Councilmember.
So there's a motion and a second, and I do see hands flying up. Councilmember Kazachek, and I believe Roger, Mr. Clerk, you have your hand up?
Yes, Your Honor, just for reference, this is item 7D on the consent agenda this evening?
Right. All righty.
For clarification, the proposal that we have does include mandatory distribution of 250 in each of the opportunity zones, right, Diana?
Yes, sir, in the new recommendations.
Okay, is that, is that going to be a part of the pilot that we have for the next five months, or a part of the RFP going forward?
It's going to be part of the RFP going forward.
All right. Secondly, I agree completely with Karen's point. One of the problems with this is the burden of navigating the non-compliance with residents and business owners, and that continues to be the case. We have issued zero, if any, citations to the operators, and until we start getting their attention that way, they're not going to, they have no incentive to comply. Finally, I would add this, and I would like this to be a part of the RFP that goes out. In both California and in Washington right now, they are requiring the scooter operators to have a component that technology exists, and they're a part of these programs, that can tell the difference between pavement and asphalt, concrete and asphalt. The reason that's important is because one of the problems we continue to have are sidewalk riding. And if the scooter operator, so this technology will shut you down if you're on a sidewalk or on concrete, but not if you're on asphalt. So this would not only help with the sidewalk riding, but it would also, if you're riding in the street anyway, you're going to be less inclined to lift the scooter up and drop it on a sidewalk when you're done riding. So that's what I would like to see you include in, as a condition of this RFP, because that will solve so many of the issues that we're having right now of the sidewalk clutter and blocking ADA access and all that. Is that acceptable, Lane? It was your motion.
Yes, of course. Those are all great points.
I agree.
So that will, also that language that Councilmember Kazachek just shared, please make sure that we noted into the record when we are approving this on consent agenda item tonight. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? Motion passes. Thank you all very much, and thank you for your hard work. Thank you, Diana.
Thank you.
All righty, let's move on to item 9. Councilmember Cunningham has requested discussion on a proposed Southern Arizona All-Star football showcase. Mr. Cunningham?
Your Honor, do we have Coach on the line? Roger?
I am here, if you can hear me.
All right, Coach, welcome. I'm going to kick this off by saying a few things, and then we'll turn it over. And, you know, this whole thing starts, you guys know that I'm an educator, I've been a teacher a long time. Hopefully, my audio and video is working right now. I moved to a better part of the house, so, you know, maybe the stream is better. My son's now a senior at Town High School. He's actually the senior body president, and I beam with pride when I say that. But he told me a few months ago, he said, you know, Dad, it's going to be weird. If we do open up, we're going to have like one year worth of school memories in one month. And I took that to heart. And I want to give credit, Javier Morales is a local sports player for AllSports.com, and I think he was, he was listening to Coach's radio show, and they said, you know, the seniors, not just the senior football players, but kids in marching bands, kid who, kids who participate in drills, drill team, spear line, flags, all that stuff missed out on all the pageantry that is high school football this year. All of it. We had games with only parents allowed to hit 40 part with masks on. That high school experience that we want for any of our kids. So a community effort, and a community effort has been launched, and I should be able to, let me get this slideshow here up. There it is. You guys can see?
No. I can't.
How's that? You guys can see?
It's, there it is. Yes, we can.
Oh, we've come up with a concept of the Southern Arizona Football Showcase. This is a program for pretty much any senior on good academic standing, who isn't participating in another AIA sport, and who is not currently signed with a college for next year, can get to play one more time. We think this is a program worth having. This program, it's around May 8, at Tucson High School. We have recruited both the Pima County Health Department in Pima County and TOSD, sure, all necessary COVID, all safety protocols and mitigating efforts would take place at any type of community event. We'd be masked, we'd be tested, we'd be socially distanced, and we'd, of course, be vaccinated, some of us being vaccinated, and that can improve the, that can improve the program. Each of these things can improve that program. We've asked, our idea is that any senior who signs up should be able to do it, any senior from Pima County, Santa from Pima County, Santa County, uh, maybe parts of Penale County and Cochise County can participate. We'd have practices per week, we'd film everything so that some of the kids may not have gotten a look for college would have a chance to do it. Also, collaborate with local marching bands and, and the school districts to see if we can have an all-star marching band, or a couple of drill teams perform before an after game. It would be a community event. The showcase would last from the 2nd to the 8th, the game would be on May 8th at Tucson High, and again, I want to thank TUSD for being so open to participating in an event like this. As I said, we'll have a COVID mitigation plan submitted, consistent with Pima County Health. As we talked about today, all those things are kind of happening organically anyway, and that's why we decided to plan this out. We thought we'd have this opportunity. But most important thing, and I think the thing that I'm most excited about is, is stop sharing? Good. The most thing that I'm excited about is that we've invited, uh, basically helping us run the game is Skirren, Coach Skirren has coached successfully at three different high schools in Tucson, United States, he's won a few, he, uh, won, won a championship at, um, at, at Pima Community College, but guess what? That's actually the least of it. He actually traveled around the world and coaches other coaches. He also teaches football in other countries, in Europe. He also, he's also trained Olympians in the modern pentathlon, alpine skiing, and other things. So, Coach Skirren has actually had some experience in working on an All-Star game, and he's helping as the executive director. So it's my pleasure to introduce Coach Skirren, Coach.
Thank you.
Councilmember Cunningham, I just wanted to ask you, I'm sorry, I said that, that your presentation was off, and it's not, so if you want to stop sharing your screen, then we'll pass it over to Coach. Go ahead, Coach, and welcome, thank you for joining us, and thank you for agreeing to be part of this excellent football showcase.
Thank you very much for your time, I, I just been listening for the last hour, I'm just amazed, having taught government and history and civics for a long time, when we used to offer that in schools, and this has been another re-education in that process, and I really wish everybody had a chance to see this, and so, and I see how valuable your time is, so thank you very much, I'll, I'll be as brief as possible. You know, our kids have missed out so much, and football is one of those sports that, that, that really, unlike a lot of other sports, until your last year, a lot of kids just aren't physically mature enough to get, you got a look at, and it takes, you know, four years of hard work and playing through high school, and now they just missed out their senior year, and through no fault of their own, and particularly when so many others in the state, for, for a variety of different reasons, got their chance to play, and so many of our kids down here didn't. And I just kind of thought about this one day, and I took a call in on my radio show, and it sparked the idea, and several others picked it up, and it's been nothing but a winner with the business community, with the Arizona Bowl, with, with Paul and his, his people that he's introduced me to, and really, everybody I've talked to has dipped in their pocket, lend a hand, we have all the officials, we're recruiting the players, nobody's taken any money for any of this stuff, it's just a, it's a wonderful community effort. The best part to me is that our city, I mean, this is a national story, our city is reaching out to help our seniors who missed out for so much when nobody else is giving that a chance, and this is a great story. And I've been a community, I'm a career educator, coaching 48 years in public education, as a teacher for 36, and, uh, you know, and this is a tough year on everybody, and this can provide just a little bit of ray of sunshine for these kids, and, and hopefully give them something to look forward to before the end of the year, and, and send them off with something very special, because as, as all of you know, not just athletics, but... Yeah, we're the only country in the world that has sports activities as part of our regular school day, and I think it's one of the things that makes us special in the world, particularly having worked in Japan and all over Europe, and, and helped a lot of these, even in Iceland, Reykjavik, Iceland, who'd ever think I'd be coaching football and helping over there? But, they envy us because our kids get a chance to get that side of the educational thing, learning how to work with people, and, and this is such a one last good shot for these kids, that really, everybody signed on that we've helped ask for, and so thank you very much for your time and your consideration on this, and I'd be happy to ask any questions.
Thank you so much, Coach. We do have a couple of hands up, Councilmember Ulrich, and then Councilmember Kozacik.
My hand wasn't intentionally up, but I do welcome the chance to say thank you so much, appreciate it, and I think it's a great idea.
It's, as they say, it's a labor of love, it really is.
It is, it's a wonderful idea, and I really want to get this opportunity to thank Councilmember Cunningham for picking this up and seeing it through, as well as you, Coach, and then of course, all the other participants, right, that are, are making this possible for seniors in our community. Let me see, where's the, Pima County, TUSD, the Arizona Bowl, and of course, the city of Tucson, hopefully here soon, we'll, we'll pitch in a bit, but everyone that has been creative to be able to bring this to our seniors, I really appreciate it. Councilmember Kozacik, I don't know if you have your hand up?
Yeah, just a couple of quick points, because it's late. First of all, thanks, Coach, for stepping up and taking this on. One, this, this would be a wonderful opportunity in, in respect of Title IX, to set this as the first step, but there are lots of other interscholastic sport student athletes who didn't get this chance, not just football players, you know, tennis, golf, swimming, whatever, and so if we could use this as a platform to hopefully expand this and, and do this countywide, regionwide, and let these student athletes of all the other sports, or many of them anyway, who missed out on their senior season to have this opportunity. Secondly, I just want to make sure, because I have, and I'll let you know, I've got a, I've got some issues with the AIA in the way they continually screw Southern Arizona in support of Maricopa County. I said it, you didn't, and, so this is for Tucson area athletes, Southern Arizona area athletes, and not, we're not dipping into, into Maricopa County and dragging them down here, right?
Yes, yes, Steve, a few things, first of all, your first point about, about the other sports, we actually want, we've expanded this program into other sports, but they don't require all the logistics of football, you know, you hire six officials, you require, like, being able to run a senior day for, for boys' basketball was actually pretty easy, we were able to encourage that. So we already have gone a, a big piece of the other sports, kind of happened a lot more organically. Also, the club, some of the clubs are already picking up in some of the other sports, specifically softball, so we, we weren't able to, uh, it's a little less of a measure for the other sports, but yes, you're on the right track, it's definitely a template. The second part of your comments is, yes, it's only Tucson area athletes, or, well, Cochise County and Santa Cruz County as well, but we still have to go on March 15th to get AIA sanctioning, because we need to allow schools to release equipment for pairs. So my motion is twofold, one is for the mayor and council to pen a letter to the AIA supporting this event, and the second part of the motion is to allot a very modest sum, somewhere between $5,000 and $10,000, to pay for some of the COVID mitigation, some of the logistics for this event, that maybe required like, uh, uh, public safe time or security or things like that, very modest amounts, that's, that's what my motion's for.
All right, well then don't tell them. All right, then don't tell them what I just said about the AIA until after we get their approval.
Yeah, we gotta get their approval first, Steve, but I'll second his motion, Madam Mayor, and I tell you, this is so important for our seniors that didn't participate, I congratulate Paul Cunningham and Jeff Skirren, the coach, and their work for, working with our young adults, you know, extracurricular, this is so important, sports is so important for relieving tension and, and taking self-discipline and doing some money, keeping kids healthy, and it's so important that we do this, so I second Steve Paul's motion.
So I have one final point, and that is, and Coach, you're painfully aware of this, all of these, all of these kids are, are recruitable athletes, and so we can't just have coaches showing up and watching the game, or they're going to, it's going to impact their ability to, to be recruited, so someone's got to dip deeply into that NCAA recruiting rulebook and make sure that they're not crossing that line, because this is not a dead period.
And thank you, we've done that, and, and as a matter of fact, as of right now, uh, the deadline, the, the dead period has been moved back, so this is technically a dead period right now, because the NCAA two weeks ago did move that, and so we are in a dead period, but we've gone through the rulebook, and I've worked with Brandon Sanders, who's now with the University of Arizona, to make sure we're dotting the i's and crossing the t's. Anybody who knows me knows that I don't take the garbage out without a second and third plan, so, you know, we, you're very right, we have to be very careful about that, and these are recruitable athletes, and this is a very valuable tool for them, because one thing that we've raised a lot of money for is to take care of the filming, and to do it in a professional way, so these kids have a very valuable tool, whether it's this year or next year, because a lot of these kids might in fact choose just to go to school part-time to give themselves a chance to be recruited, because the NCAA has rules that have allowed fifth-year players to stay on, so we've gone through this, and thank you for reminding us, because it's very important, but we have gone through this with a fine-toothed comb to make sure that we do not cross any lines.
Thank you so much, Coach, and we have a motion in a second, without further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed?
Congratulations.
Motion passes, congratulations, and thank you so much for doing this, Councilmember Cunningham, and thank you, Coach.
Thank you for having me.
Hopefully we'll get a good favorable ruling from the AIA next week, thank you.
Thank you. We move on to item 10, time has been set aside for discussion of state and national legislation, regional committee issues, and any other further efforts. Mr. Ortega, we did hear from Andrew Greenhill, I don't think we have any additional reports at this time?
Mayor, I'll turn it over to Andrew, I know we're running short on time, we did go over the big one earlier. Andrew, is there any guidance that you need from the state or for the state legislative agenda?
Yeah, Honorable Mayor, members of the council, just real quick, I submitted the report with the bills from the state legislature, with the recommendations, so I'm happy to answer any questions about any of the bills, but in the interest of time, if you'd like to respectfully request a motion to support the recommendations in the report.
So move.
Second. There is a motion and a second to forward the recommendations in the report, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any, any opposed? None heard, motion passes, thank you so much, Andrew, really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Item 11, does anyone have any items to remove from the consent agenda? Mr. Clerk? And then Ms. Ulrich?
Yes, Your Honor, we have a request to consider item 7C, the prohibiting the racing of vehicles separately.
Councilmember Ulrich?
Yes, I just wanted to make sure, 7D sounded like it needed a little bit of wordsmithing perhaps, I don't know if it needs to be removed, I think it probably does, right, Mr. Clerk? So I just wanted to note that related to the e-scooters.
Okay.
Yes, we'll remove that as well.
Thank you, sorry about that.
No, absolutely, absolutely, you're right. Any others? Already hearing none, let's move on to item 12, does anyone have any items for future agendas?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I've received several calls from business owners and neighborhoods from Sixth Avenue, 12th Avenue, and now Broadway about the questionable activities of smoke shops and new smoke shops going up quickly in our city. We have heard complaints about the hours these smoke shops are operating, and allegations that they're trying to get in the adult choice marijuana business. For the April 6th, Mayor and Council studies, and I'm requesting 20 minutes to be set aside for staff to update the mayor and council about current state, county, and city regulations on smoke shops, and are they able to sell adult choice marijuana, and the requirements to see to sell liquor, or just, my memo was forthcoming.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Fimbras, we will consider that item. Did you say that you wanted it for the 23rd? April? Okay.
Uh, April 6th or the 23rd, it's fine with me, Madam Mayor.
Okay, perfect, thank you so much.
I'm happy to come up with a solution.
Alrighty, so we are adjourned, the regular session begins in the next 10 minutes, we're just going to get a little break, use the restroom, and then come back in 10 minutes, and then we'll rock and roll for the regular agenda. Thank you all so much for your hard work, and I'll see you all in 10 minutes. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Cunningham?
Alrighty.
Mizu, Mizulik?
Here.
Mrs. Lee?
Here.
Mr. Fimbres?
Here.
Mr. Kazachik?
Here.
Mr. Cunningham?
Here.
Mayor Romero?
Here. Item 2?
Invocation and pledge of allegiance.
The invocation will be given by Anna Marufo, Staff Member for the City Clerk's Office.
Thank you, Mayor Romero. Let us pray. Lord, we pray for all government officials, and especially for the leaders of our city. We pray for this ma- for this mayor and council that they may truly respect the needs of the people and work in harmony for the advancement of all men, women, and children of our city. Grant to all men and women the gift of respect for all the actions of the mayor and council. May mayor and council work to form true bonds of unity and work together to improve the quality of all in our city. Amen.
Thank you. Um, item 2C?
Presentations.
Alrighty, I do not have the language for, um, oh, here it is, proclamation. I do have the language for, for the proclamation. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Um, I would like to proclaim March 1st to be COVID-19 Victims and Survivors' Day. Let me read the proclamation to you all. Uh, whereas the first Monday in March has been designated as COVID-19 Victims and Survivors' Memorial Day. And whereas COVID-19, SARS-CoV-2, is an illness caused by a virus that can transmit from person to person and has spread across the world, creating a global pandemic that is having cata- catastrophic effects on the human life, our community, and our economy. And whereas local and state governments, health departments, and public servants have taken bold actions to protect residents, support struggling local economies, and find innovative ways to provide services. And whereas in response to rapid spread of COVID-19 and stay-at-home orders, essential workers have stepped up to provide critical services to help protect our communities and save lives, sacrificing their own health and safety. And whereas COVID-19 has had a disproportionate impact on low-income communities and communities of color, exacerbating inequities already prevalent in our system that we must address as a nation. And whereas public health guidance and policies targeted at prevention, such as social distancing, wearing masks in public, and staying home, help mitigate the spread of COVID-19, prevent illness, and lessen the burden on individuals and society. Whereas the symptoms and severity of COVID-19 can vary dramatically, can vary dramatically by individual, and the long-term health implications for survivors is largely unknown. And many survivors suffer with lingering side effects of the disease long after they no longer test positive. And whereas each life lost to COVID-19 mattered and leaves a hole in the hearts of loved ones, family members, and our surrounding community. And now, therefore, I, Regina Romero, Mayor of the City of Tucson, Arizona, do hereby proclaim March 1st to be COVID-19 Victims and Survivors' Day, and encourage all citizens of Tucson to join in remembrance of those who have lost their lives and in honor of those who are forever marked by COVID-19 and continue to suffer from the impact of this virus. In witness whereof, I hereon to set my hind hand and cause the seal of the City of Tucson, Arizona, to be affixed this first day of March 2021. Thank you so much, everyone. I appreciate the groups that reached out to us to, um, to help do that proclamation. Item 2D?
Appointments to boards, committees, and commissions.
City Manager's Communication Number 65, dated March 9th, is received and made part of the record. May I have a motion?
Yes, I would move to approve the appointments of both Henry Johnson and Phyllis Russell to the Veterans Affairs Committee.
I'll second that, Madam Mayor.
There is a motion in a second. I would like to thank Henry Johnson and Phyllis Russell for your willingness to serve the City of Tucson. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Are there any personal appointments to be made at this time? Hearing none. Let's move on to item 3.
Mayor and council report summary of current events.
City Manager's Communication Number 66, dated March 9th, is received and made part of the record. This time has been scheduled to allow members of the mayor and council to report on current events. They are to be current events of activities within the community, not position statements on policy issues. Does any council member have anything to report at this time? Alrighty, let's start like we usually do. Um, let's start with, uh, word one.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so I just want to acknowledge that, uh, yesterday, Monday, uh, March 8th was International Women's Day, so happy, happy day to all the mujeres here on the council and for all your work and service to our community and, you know, all, all the, all the women then presenting people in the City of Tucson. Um, I also, um, want to let folks know that the Pima County Land Trust is holding an online event this Thursday, March 11th, at 5:30, on Why Housing Stability Matters. Um, this coming Sunday, March 14th, at 10:00 a.m., um, we're restarting our Fuga rides from the Ward 1 office for a community bike ride. Um, we're just asking folks to make sure that they come masked, um, to the ride. And then, um, lastly, I just wanted to, um, acknowledge and, and honor the life of Manuel Manny Herrera Jr., who passed this past Saturday, March 6th. Um, in, in honor of his life, um, their, his daughters are, are planning a tree planting event this Saturday, March 13th, at 9:00 a.m., um, at the Manny Herrera Jr. Park. Um, you know, I'm gonna be working, um, with your office, Mayor, to do a proclamation, um, for this, you know, longtime committed, um, neighborhood activist in the South Side, um, who, you know, who fought really hard for a lot of the, the improvements, a lot of the park amenities, and, um, scholarship opportunities that we have for, um, kids in the Sunnyside School District. So I just want to, um, you know, acknowledge his life and, and thank his family for, for sharing, um, his, all of his all of his work with us.
Thank you, Councilmember Santa Cruz. Indeed, a true and wonderful Tucson treasure, Mr. Herrera, was to our community. And I join you. And for the family, our deepest condolences. We will miss him a lot. And Mr. Manny Herrera did so much for the South Side and Sunnyside families. And we will truly miss him.
Madam Chair, Mayor, I'd like to also add that he helped establish with Ben Bennett the All-American Awards luncheon and then dinner. And he raised a lot of money for Sunnyside School Kids to go on further their education. He was a true gem and a Navy veteran, too. And he also had his daughter Marty was a councilwoman at Sawarita, Yolanda is the head of Ucap, and also Becky Quintero is a Sunnyside School Board member. So they have, you know, he had good role models to follow.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you for bringing them up.
Thank you. Councilmember Cunningham, do you have any current events to share?
Just one thing, and I want to stay consistent, as I've done the whole pandemic, I always talked about getting tested, and in the last few weeks, I've talked about getting vaccinated. But I think I want to kind of shift and say, because in the last item, I want to have a football game, and I'm looking forward to opening up and all those things, we're really not out of the woods yet. We got a ways to go. Stay vigilant. We got 10 weeks to get us where we need to get. And let's just keep, you know, keep at it. If you need help, I want to say this today for sure. If you're having trouble getting vaccinated and you are part of the group that's allowed right now, so if you're over 65 or one of the workers identified within the parameter can't get through or are having trouble, feel free to call my office, and we'll try to at least get you into a call pool so someone can call you back. And you can try us, too. We're willing to help. We're willing to roll up our sleeves and get our... We want to get as many people qualified to vaccinate as quick as we can. If you can't find my number on the internet, reach out to me through Facebook or Twitter. I'm there. If you need to get vaccinated, I'd love to be able to help you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Ulic.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A few quick announcements from the Ward 3 team. On Thursday, March 18th, at 5:30, I invite you to join the team from Ward 3 and the staff of Tucson Clean and Beautiful to learn how you can participate in the Green Stormwater Infrastructure Mini Grants to help implement passive stormwater harvesting in your neighborhood. Also, on Thursday, April 1st, at 5:30, the Ward Office will host a Neighborhood Traffic Calming Information Session. We'll be joined by members of the Department of Transportation and Mobility and others to help identify potential options. The number at my office is 791-4711, or you can email ward3@tucsonaz.gov for more information. And then finally, each spring, the Sugar Hill Neighborhood and Mansfield Park hosts the Extravagance Egg Hunt. This event has been, was started many, many years ago by Sugar Hill residents, and the Parks and Rec Department continues. It's an amazing tradition. Due to COVID, there are some adjustments this year, so Parks and Rec is hosting an egg hunt at 40 parks across the city, starting March 19th through the 25th. Families will be asked to scan a QR code, which I do not know what that is, on the eggs to register for a drive-through where they can receive their goodie bag for each child under 18. The drive-through event at Mansfield Park will occur Saturday, March 27th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. For more info, you can go to tucsonaz.gov/parks or call 791-4873. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Vice Mayor Lee.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to give a shout out and promote the Ready, Set, Rec program. Ward 4 Mobile Van is going to be at Lakeside Park tomorrow, March 10th, from 9:00 to 11:00 for general play and some fishing. So there's not a lot of places in town you can get your fish on, but tomorrow, Lakeside Park is going down. Reminder that each program is going to have limited participants. Masks are going to be required, as well as physical distancing. Equipment's cleaned between each uses and prior to activities taking place. If you feel sick, please don't come out and share that with the group. And for more information, you can go to tucsonaz.gov/parks/readysetrec. We also have a Household Hazardous Waste Collection happening at Pima East Campus, which is at 8181 East Irvington Road, 8:00 a.m. to noon on Saturday, March 13th. I should have said that first. They'll be collecting hazardous waste, electronic waste, glass bottles and jars, paper documents for shredding, limit three boxes. And we have our monthly Ward 4 Virtual Town Hall happening on Thursday, March 25th, at 5:30 with Parks and Rec. It'll be an opportunity to hear about everything that's going on at Parks and Rec in Ward 4 and meet Laura Hamway, our new Parks and Rec Director, and get your questions answered. More information can be found on tucsonaz.gov/ward4 on that. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Fimbres.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Pima County Supervisor Ramon Valadés, Pima County Attorney Barbara Lawal, Pima County Recorder F. M. Rodriguez, and Pima County Assessor Bill Staples served our community in the roles they were elected to have, and now they've left office. I worked with Congresswoman Ann Kepatrick's office to make each, to have each recognized in the congressional record. I want to thank Congresswoman Ann Kepatrick and her staff for making this happen, and Ramon Valadés, Barbara Lawal, F. M. Rodriguez, and Bill Staples for their service for our community. There were two pop-up COVID-19 vaccine sites in Ward 5 and on the South Side, and Rising Star, at Rising Star Baptist Church and Greyhound Park. More than 700 COVID vaccinations were given at Rising Star Baptist Church, and more than 500 COVID vaccines were given at Greyhound Park. I want to congratulate Reverend Amos Lewis and his staff of Rising Star, as well as Tucson, South Tucson Mayor Bob Tesco for arranging the Greyhound Park. I also want to thank Pima County Supervisor Adelita Grijala and Matt Hines for advocating for vaccine sites in the 8506, 85713, and 85714 areas, along with Dr. Teresa Cullen. I want to thank the Pima County Health Department and their work for these two vaccine sites and their work in battling the COVID-19 virus. The Sunnyside School District, Arizona Bilingual, La Panda Rosa, and Health First Solutions will be offering free COVID-19 testing sites. On March 11th, 18th, and 25th, from 11:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., free COVID testing sites will take place at Desert View High School. On March 16th to 23rd, from 11:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., free COVID testing sites will take place at Sunnyside High School. Congratulate to them. On a sad note, we mentioned about Manny Herrera passing, and also, we lost another, we lost two other people this week. Elizabeth Johnson, known to her friends and community as Lizzie, passed away. Lizzie served for 10 years as the president of the Board of Project Pep. Her knowledge and experience will be missed. My condolences to the Johnson family for the loss. We found out today that Eddie Sartemayor, who was the head of Fairgrounds Neighborhood Association for so long, and he worked hard to improve the Fairgrounds Neighborhood, serving as president, he passed away, too, this week. So that's so sad. He's the first one to create the city's first pocket park neighborhood, La Mariposa Park. And on a very sad note, I lost my brother on March 2nd. My brother Stephen Fimbres earned his heavenly wings. Steve served in the U.S. Army Reserves and worked as a medical tech at the Southern Arizona VA Hospital. Sird, was a leader, Steve was a leader in his church, worked out those in need of our community. I want to thank everyone who sent supportive messages to me and the Fimbres family on his passing. Please keep Steve and his family in your prayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Fimbres. And I'm so sorry for your loss. We really are praying for the Fimbres family and for you, for this grave loss.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for the platte also. Very appreciative.
Of course, of course. Councilmember Kozaczek.
Yeah, I would just echo your thoughts to Richard and your family. You know, just such horrible, horrible loss.
Thank you, Steve. Yeah, cancer, he finally lost his battle to cancer, so.
We send our love to Steve's family as well. We know that they must be suffering. I just wanted to share with the community that my staff, the staff at the mayor's office and staff in the city manager's office, as well as department directors throughout the city, have been helping to coordinate and organize virtual budget town halls that I'd love for my colleagues on the council to help share with the community. I know that some of my colleagues are doing their own, and encourage you all to continue having discussions. I know Vice Mayor Lee is taking the lead in having different town halls, but I think that it would be great for you all to feel empowered to be able to share these information on the budget town halls that are being put together. My staff is working diligently, but it really should be open to the entire community. And all of you are invited, as well as your staffs, to come and listen to the community. We're taking a different approach in how we present the budget town halls. It is not going to be by department. It's going to be by service area. And so, the first of those budget town halls is going to happen this Thursday, March 11th, from 5:30 to 7:00 p.m. And we will be talking about infrastructure and mobility. The next one after that will be Saturday, March 20th, from 10:30 in the morning to 12:00 noon. And that particular town hall will be focusing on climate action and adaptation. Saturday, March 27th, from 10:30 a.m. to 12:00 noon, we will be talking about community safety. And then Thursday, April 8th, it's from 5:30 to 7:00 p.m., and we will be talking about resilient recovery. We chose different times and different dates so that people, that we could accommodate people and the different schedules that people have. Please go to www.tucsonaz.gov to sign up for this virtual budget town halls. We're hoping that there will be facilitated and presentations from the departments will be given, and people will be able to have an opportunity to answer polling questions and have a discussion with the department directors. So I hope that you all can share this information on your social media sites, as well as your newsletters, and please invite the community to attend. Tucsonaz.gov is on the front page of our website, and people can jump in there and click on the virtual budget town halls and sign up to attend. Thank you all so much for that. We move on to item four.
City Manager's Report Summary of Current Events.
City Manager's Communication Number 67, dated March 9th, is received and made part of the record. This time has been scheduled to allow the city manager to report on current events. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, no report today. Thank you.
Alrighty, item five.
Liquor License Applications Report from City Manager.
City Manager's Communication Number 68, dated March 9th, is received and made part of the record. Mr. Clerk, please read the liquor license agenda.
Your honor, on this evening's liquor license agenda, under item 5B, we have one request for new license. Under item 5D, we have two requests for agent change, acquisition of control. Item 5B1, Tucson Police Department has indicated that the applicant is not in compliance with city requirements. Item D2, the City Clerk's Office has indicated that the applicant is not in compliance with city requirements. So an appropriate motion would be to forward item D1 to the State Liquor Board with the recommendation of approval.
So moved.
Second.
The motion in a second. Alrighty, so there's a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Mr. Clerk.
So, Your Honor, the first item to be considered separately would be item 5B1. This is Love Cabaret located in Ward 6.
Councilmember Kozaczek.
Thanks. We have two speakers. Let me check and see if they're on. Jennifer Beard, Sylvia Berman. Roger, do you have them?
Yes, they're both on.
Okay, and the applicant Rory Juneman should be on?
Yes.
Okay. Let's start out, well, let's start out with the neighborhood speakers, and then we'll go to Rory so he can respond, and I'll have a couple of closing comments. So Jennifer, if you'd like to begin? You there?
Can you hear me?
Yes, now we can.
Okay, my name is Jennifer Beard. I live at 575 by the East First Street, directly west of my neighbor, Love Cabaret. I've been a resident of Metman Neighborhood for 23 years. In that time, I've experienced an excess amount of noise, trash, violence, property damage, and intrusions to my home directly related to TD's East and now Love Cabaret. Over the years, I've been in contact with the police in Ward 6 many times as a little result in protecting my family and property.
You're getting some feedback, but go ahead.
I'm speaking to you today in hopes to better, to make a better future for myself and my neighborhood community and our community neighbor of Thunder Heights by expressing my personal experience of having an adult entertainment establishment as a neighbor. Within the first hour of the opening of Love Cabaret, three women, two cars parked along McKinley, between the no parking signs, playing loud music and shouting over the music. After half an hour, I couldn't handle the noise anymore, so I yelled at them over my wall that they were in a no parking zone and they should leave. I will not repeat the disgraceful things they said to me. During the pandemic curfew, the club continued to close at 2:00 a.m. I know this because I heard them leave nightly at that time. I've since learned many neighbors heard and saw them, too, because they parked throughout the neighborhood. One evening, I went to get my mail, and as I did, a car came around the corner and drove past me. The man in the car shouted out "bang, bang" and drove off. I recognized the car as one that I saw heading towards the McKinley exit from the club as I drove past it moments before. I had a whole week of a blinding white light in my home from their new LED sign that hurt my eyes every time I crossed paths with it. It's still the brightest sign on Speedway. There is constant traffic all night long coming in and out of the club through our neighborhood. In 2013, when TD East caught fire, I was so grateful. I'd never forgotten the first quiet, blissful night. After TD's began to rebuild, I worked with the neighborhood to collect signatures to review their liquor license. I worked with Ward 6, the owners and TPD, to collect some of the noise, to correct some of the noise, trash, property damage, intrusion, and violence directed at our community. TD's built a wall, changed their trash dump and pickup times, and I was given the general manager's number for direct contact. However, after the reopening, it got worse. It was three years of parking lot fights, parties, and weekend barbecues, noise, trash, graffiti, destruction of my property, and intrusion, and the most devastating night I have ever experienced of 66 bullets, so loud I dropped to the floor sobbing. Eight cars were damaged and one person wounded. It devastated our residential community. I still worry every time I hear that deep vibrating bass play from cars driving into the parking lot nightly. It means trouble in my experience. Over the years, I've had a fence taken down three times as intoxicated patrons drove out of the club west and down my utility easement. I've had my gas meter taken out, my water meter broken, my wall and front yard have been defecated and urinated on. I've... I've found drugs, needles, knives, shanks, used women's underwear and clothing, sex toys, condoms, food containers, liquor bottles often broken, cigarette butts, and trash on my property. My wall has bullet holes in it. I had intoxicated men knock on my door on several occasions asking for money. My wish is to rectify the wrongful zoning of this business in our residential neighborhood. It is the only adult entertainment business in Tucson that directly faces its residential neighbors in close proximity. It gets busy with liquor and noise after 10:00 PM until 3:00 AM. Would you want that as a neighbor? This kind of business does not belong in a residential neighborhood. It brings noise, crime, violence, prostitution, drugs, and gang members to our community. I am asking the mayor and the city council to permanently deny Love Cabaret a liquor license and review the rezoning of the property of 5822 East Speedway to a residential-friendly business that will enhance our neighborhood. Please consider the impact you will have on the future of our Mittman and Thunder Heights residential communities. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Jennifer. It's Thunderbird Heights, and Sylvia, you're next.
This letter of protest represents Mittman and Thunderbird Heights neighborhood. I am the founder of Mittman Neighborhood Association. Our quiet neighborhoods are filled with young families, retirees, and medical personnel from nearby St. Joseph's Hospital and TMC. We request the application for permanent liquor license for Love's Cabaret, formerly TD's Show Clubs, be denied. Our protest was developed after canvassing the neighborhood for several months. You can see the collection of letters. Recently, currently the 2015 site plan for the we take great issue with this plan in which we were neither consulted nor considered. This nightclub has devastated this neighborhood for many years. Neither parking nor access is sufficient. There is no effective buffer zone to abate the noise and traffic from 10:00 PM to 3:00 AM. There are 76 parking spaces, yet occupancy is 253 persons. The surrounding neighborhood is disturbed with cars parking along First and Second Streets. Residents have endured drug and sex activity, dumping of sex and drug paraphernalia, liquor containers, and cigarette butts in front of their homes and in the easements behind their yards. There is only one lane of access that this Loves actually possesses to their business. One lane, single lane, from Speedway. Their primary access is the easement on the residential side street. This land belongs to breakmasters, and their customers must trespass to gain entrance and leave. The nightclub entrance is in the easement. The parking lot is on First Street, near homes with children. The easement runs through the middle of the property, and it is impossible to erect and adequate separation. Residents are forced to hear everything until after 2:00 AM. After Steve Cooper acquired TD's, the property received a trash violation for dumping in the easement. Residents were mortified. This was our first impression. In September, Mittman sent out its annual newsletter through the City of Tucson Resources. We announced meetings regarding the liquor license application, and we invited everyone. Nobody contacted us. In October, I requested that Officer Robert Garza handle the loitering in the parking lot, sex, drugs, drinking, and noise. In November, I sent Officer Garza over there again. Ward 6 held a Zoom meeting on December 29. I stated that our association is well organized. We had canvassed the entire area, and I would be writing the protest. Attorney Rory Juneman said that if they did not get the liquor license, the property might revert to the previous owner. Actually, the property has a quitclaim deed. It could not be returned. I shared this information with all the residents. During the Zoom meeting, residents complained about the problems since the new management took over. Noise from loiterers in the parking lot. People smoke anywhere they like. Cars enter the neighborhood through the easement presumably to avoid TPD after drinking, and they speed through our neighborhood at all hours of the night. Liquor containers, drug and sex paraphernalia, cigarette butts are dumped in our streets. Dancers wander around in the neighborhood in costume day and night. It was revealed that they allow their dancers to drink on the job, and they don't feel they can control the behavior since they are independent contractors. We were told they plan to spend a lot of money to upgrade the nightclub. They did not, however, want to spend in advance in case they didn't get the license, including parking lot security. One of Mr. Cooper's representatives said he would install a car in the parking lot with a flashing yellow light. An empty car was parked in a handicap space with a flashing yellow light, and it attracted graffiti. On January, in January, I requested Officer Garza go over there again. On February 1, a second Zoom meeting was held. We continued to complain since nothing much had changed. In one graffiti event, a child living on the other side of the wall was frightened by what she thought were animals outside of her home. Dave, the national manager who does not live in Tucson, just visited the nightclub and had not even noticed the graffiti. The whole neighborhood noticed it, and so did TPD. There was no effort to communicate with the unfortunate family. Dave suggested they would install a metal movable gate on the easement to control at their convenience, but they do not own the property. They reported that the smoking cage was now open, and we reported that people still smoke wherever they like. Mike said he would start cleaning up the trash deposits. Gwen, last Friday, I found pantyhose in the street in front of the easement access. It is still there. People, go Saturday mornings, Sunday mornings, you will see the residents picking up all the trash up and down the street. We were offered a commitment letter. In exchange for giving up our right to protest, certain promises were made. We showed it to an attorney who confirmed it was nonsense. In their closing argument, Natalie Cooper, Steve Cooper's daughter, repeated the fallacy that the property could revert to the previous owner if they did not get a liquor license. Since then, an expensive neon sign was installed. See the code violation. They didn't bother to get a permit. Didn't they say they didn't want to put any money in the property in case they didn't get the liquor license?
About one minute, Sylvia.
Don't worry. Most of the children who attend Sewell Elementary School reside in Mittman. Angry parents asked me to speak with the principal. One woman said, "These people should be ashamed of themselves trying to put a sex club in a kindergarten." Mittman Neighborhood has suffered for 50 years. During the Zoom meetings, it was stated that if they did not get the liquor license, quote, "Someone worse could," unquote. Wrong. No one could be worse. Tucson Police Department rejected the liquor license. Residents of Mittman, Thunderbird, and Sewell link with TPD. They have never lied to us. We asked Tucson City Council to join taxpayers and voters in rejecting the liquor license. We further request a review of the site plan and zoning classification. Thank you.
Thank you, Sylvia. I understand Steve Wilson from TPD is on the call, and he will be familiar with the report. Steve, have you logged in?
Yes, Councilman Kozak, I am here. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Sure. Do you have any questions? You should have the memo that we authored and disclosed in the denial process.
Just summarize for the council what your findings were. That's good.
So in September of 2020, the owner's other establishment, Christie's Cabaret on South Tucson Boulevard, there was a fight that occurred which resulted in a homicide where the victim was shot and killed in the parking lot of the establishment. On 9/18 of 2020, Department of Liquor received, I'm sorry, they responded out and served the owners with a temporary suspension, and that was reference COVID violations that they observed in conjunction with the investigation that we were current, we were conducting. On the 20th, the city clerks received an application for the establishment on West Miracle Mile, and we also received one for the East Speedway application or location. They had not disclosed the act of violence on the application or the violations of the COVID mandate set forth by the state and the governor. And then on the 10th of October, they received a amendment for the assignment of the liquor license, which basically separated out the names from Christie's and the LLC for Mr. Cooper's businesses. So they were both split off into different LLCs. On the 29th is when we served them with the notification of noncompliance based on the above aforementioned, the events and incidents that occurred. We felt that the applicant was not in compliance based on those items.
Thank you, Steve. Rory Juneman is the applicant's representative. Rory, you're on.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Thank you, Councilmember Kozak. Rory Juneman, 5983 East Grant Road, representing the Coopers. I want to start by thanking Councilmember Kozak for putting together several meetings with the neighbors that in the attempt to open up lines of communication. Those meetings allowed the Coopers to really understand that the prior owner of the club managed as TD's or branded as TD's, operated that club in a way that created a lot of nuisance issues for the neighborhood. And we understand why the neighbors have have a lot of concerns. But over the course of those months, several Zoom meetings, meetings with individual neighbors, the Coopers listened to those concerns. We've come up with numerous items, two pages of commitments that are designed to help mitigate those nuisance issues. We provided a copy of that to you. I won't go through them all, but they range from increased security patrols and protocols, physical changes to the parking area that are intended to reduce the noise and the traffic flow into the neighborhood, adding a smoking area to the building, and a commitment to communication, including local and national points of contact and attending neighborhood meetings, really with the intent of creating accountability and communication with the neighbors. These weren't just lip service. Earlier this month, you recommended approval of a liquor license for Flirt Cabaret, which is also owned by the Coopers. There, we worked extensively with the Miracle Manor Neighborhood in Ward 3 and developed a list of commitments for that property. Now, that that club was recently licensed, and the Coopers have already started to work to perform on those commitments. And this is how they do business. They own 17 clubs across the country. They strive to operate well-managed and safe clubs, and they have an excellent record with the Arizona Liquor Board, especially over the last couple of decades. Admittedly, they had a COVID violation at their Tucson Airport Club. The liquor board shut them down for a couple of weeks, but the Coopers worked very hard to remedy that, to come up with the right protocols. And since then, they've passed all their subsequent inspections. It was an isolated incident on an otherwise excellent liquor license record. I do want to say that we've had contact with one of the other direct neighbors of the club who has told us that 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 he is not seeing the same things that we've heard tonight since the Coopers took over that operation of the club. And, you know, all I can, all I can do is is believe him. Now, I want to state one thing for the record in this case. State law requires that all written protests related to liquor license transfers be received by the clerk within 20 days of the posting date. That posting date in this case was September 24, 2020. So the posting period ended 20 days later on October 14, 2020, and all written protests in this case were received after that date. So by law, the city clerk was not supposed to accept those protests. Now, that's a technical argument that we that the Coopers basically have not wanted to to bring up. I bring it up for the record just because this case likely is going to go to the liquor board. But the Coopers, they just, they chose to work and wanted to work with the neighbors to find some resolution in this case. They've even committed to the proposed mitigation even without the agreement from the neighbors. The fact is, the Coopers are going to run this club much differently than the prior owner. They are committed to be a responsive and responsible operator that will ensure that the club successfully coexists with the neighborhood in the future. So based on that, we respectfully recommend or ask that you recommend approval of this liquor license transfer.
Thanks, Rory. If you are objecting to letters of protest within 20 days, then I suggest you take the same position with respect to the letter supporting it, I mean, just yesterday. So let's be consistent as far as that goes. Secondly, I appreciate the outreach. We have had several meetings, multiple meetings, and it's my understanding that the Coopers have committed to the conditions of the letter irrespective of whether or not we recommend approval or denial once they get their liquor license, if they do at the state level. The basis for my recommendation is about the person, whether or not the new owners have demonstrated inability to control the premises in a manner deserving a license. To see that, we only need to look at experience, both on this site, since they've taken ownership, and at the other Tucson sites that they've controlled. At the former TD's on Speedway, you've heard tonight that the residents have experienced multiple incidents in and around the parking lot under prior ownership. Their hope was that things would change, and unfortunately, on Friday, November 6 of just last year, under this ownership, a wild party spilled out into the parking lot and lasted until 2:00 AM. Patrons blocked no parking zones, fire hydrants, and residents who requested things toned down were reportedly met with insults that Jennifer related to earlier. The establishment has no approved plans to use any of the spaces on the exterior of the building, and yet they were. There were no special event permits for the party, and indeed, that was right in the middle of the pandemic, and we weren't allowing special events. So the management showed an irresponsible approach to their early opening protocols. However, these applicants also own Christie's Cabaret out by the airport. September 6 of 1920, just last, 2020, just last, 1920, 2020, just last year, there was a fight in that parking lot, and during that fight, TPD reports that there were over 40 shots fired, and there was a homicide. September 18, the State Department of Liquor met with representatives of Christie, served him a temporary suspension of a license, and then on December 3, TPD recommended denial as a result of failure to disclose that suspension. So this isn't the only incident involving a shooting in their parking lot. On June 12 of 2020, the TPD reported another fight in the parking lot, and a shooting occurred with one person injured. There have been reported incidents at the TD's West site since the ownership changed. TD's Speedway Love, Loves, I guess, Cabaret has a history of exactly these kinds of incidents. And while it butts Speedway to the north, as both of the speakers pointed out, the parking area and its activities directly impact the residential area to the south. These applicants have failed to control activities taking place on their property, and the residents deserve a business that's an amenity to the area, one in which the owners act as though they live there and were a part of the neighborhood, not where TPD is the fallback when things get out of control. So with that, I would recommend we send a recommendation of denial to the state liquor board.
Second. There is a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Mr. Clerk, do we need to do roll call?
You can do a voice vote, Your Honor.
All righty, so all those in favor of the recommendation of the motion indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all so much. Really appreciate it. There's some excitement there over there with Sylvia in the neighborhood. What I'm going to do is we're going to do call to the audience. We have half an hour for call to the audience, and there has been a request by Councilmember Fimres if there's a possibility of advancing item 10 on the on the agenda. So I do see Mr. Randolph's hand up.
Before we go to call to the, Your Honor, we do have one additional liquor license that needs to be considered. It is it is item 5D2.
It is Item 5D2, Scordato's Pizzeria located in Ward III. Your Honor, the applicant has failed to pay their application fees.
Wow. Okay. So that will be considered or not considered at all tonight?
We would still need a motion from the council, Your Honor.
What is the deadline for consideration? Madam Mayor, I didn't mean to cut in. I... Thank you.
Go ahead.
The last date that this item could be considered by council is March 14th.
Aye.
We can request an extension, but at this point, we have had no correspondence from the applicant regardless of our attempts.
I would ask that we reach out. I mean, it's a small business that I don't know what the status is of the business. But I would hate to move to deny them, given the conditions in the economy right now. I just don't know what's driving it. So if we could request an extension, Mr. Clerk, is that possible?
Yes, we can. We can request an extension and bring this back on the meeting of the 23rd.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Do I need a motion?
You need direction?
We can just accept that as direction.
Thank you.
All righty. Thank you, Councilmember Ullik. Now, we're ready to move on to Call to the Audience. But before we start Call to the Audience, there has been a request by Councilmember Fimres if we can move up Item 10 to Right After Call to the Audience, because he would like to be present for that particular item. And we'll have to leave pretty soon after because of family reasons. So I want to make sure that we open up at least half an hour for Call to the Audience and move Item 10 up to Right After Item 6. So with that, Item 6, Mr. Clerk?
Call to the Audience, Your Honor.
At this time, the public is allowed to address the mayor and council on any issue. Speakers are limited to three-minute presentations. Call to the Audience is scheduled to last for no more than 30 minutes. Pursuant to the Arizona Open Meeting Law, individual council members may ask the city manager to review the matter as the matter be placed on a future agenda or respond to criticism made by speakers. However, the mayor and council may not discuss or take legal action on matters raised during Call to the Audience. So I have a list of names that I will call upon. And, Mr. Clerk, make sure that you keep the audience members to three minutes and the Call to the Audience for 30 minutes. First person I'd like to call is Martha Lynn.
She is on, Your Honor.
Martha Lynn.
Hi, Martha.
Hello.
We are hearing you. You have three minutes. Go ahead.
Thank you. I voted for this progressive mayor and council. And I, Your Honorable, am so glad to be working with you. I'm here, working with the platform. We're longer serendipitous. Our goals are achieved by working together. There is no total justice without social justice for all, and no social justice without immigrant justice, as that underpins the quality of health. Now, I hear that a law development law has not just for my neighborhood, what I development, but choose. It takes the power of setting density levels at your hands, gives it to developer. When this law is used on a project, it makes your zoning hours any... And it creates conflict of interest for developers, anyone who got money out of decisions made there. Projects like the Six Acre Development, La Choya on 36th Street, I need islands. The bulldozers, it blows intention in houses, and there's not even room for residents who will live there on their property. Do we really want that little island down as infill Tucson?
I think we lost.
Climate shows almost a four-and-a-half degree increase in heat over a few years. That's according to, based on average, put out NOAA. We are a booming city in the United States, surpassing the speed of war. So I worry social justice populace thrown in heat islands. Once in...
20 seconds.
Not mitigating this, it takes treason shade to mitigate the heat. And this little project may be appropriate in areas in Tucson. And so, for housing, but not appropriate on land.
Thank you so much, Martha. Your time is up. Can you come to a conclusion, please, in the next 10 seconds?
Sure. Affordable housing for the population of people with... Are not $230, three forms, city should be conventional housing, it's about $200,000. And better yet, what we... The temperament of our state is out of the box thinking for housing, for affordable housing. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Daisy Jenkins?
She's on, Your Honor.
Daisy, if you are on, you have to press star six in order for us to hear you. Daisy? Hello? Daisy? Mr. Clerk, do we have Daisy with us?
Yes, Your Honor. She needs to hit star six again. There she is.
I've been pressing star six.
We can hear you now, Daisy. Daisy, you have three minutes. Go ahead.
Hello?
We can hear you now. You have three minutes. Go ahead, Daisy.
Okay.
Okay, great. Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council, for the opportunity to speak in support... To speak in support of City Magistrate Geraldine Hale. A highly intelligent, kind, and gentlewoman who had known for almost three decades. We were fellow students at the University of Arizona College of Law. First of all, I and many of the members of the community are very concerned about the... About the magistrate commission's recommendation not to reappoint Judge Hale, and equally appalled at the content of the magistrate commission's report regarding Judge Hale. What should have been an objective, fact-based...
I think we lost Daisy. Mr. Clerk?
...in credibility, while dismissing all of the positive feedback reeks of malice and certainly calls into question... Hello?
We can hear you. There's some feedback.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, there's some feedback and background. If there's anyone there with you that is listening to the meeting, can they put everything on mute, please?
The credibility of the commission. Such disparagement is nothing new to women of color when...
Daisy, you've got your audio going, and the delay is what's messing you up.
Okay. So while calling her a bully, questioning her legal knowledge and credibility, while dismissing all of the positive feedback reeks of malice and certainly calls into question the credibility of the commission. Such disparagement is nothing new to women of color when we take a stand on an unpopular position. We're either angry, authoritarian, incompetent, and certainly don't deserve to remain in our position.
30 seconds.
The fact that the commission's report was leaked to the Arizona Daily Star is nothing short of a tactic to publicly damage Judge Hale's reputation, as well as to try her in the court of public opinion. This is especially egregious since the commission never gave Judge Hale a copy of the report. It's also noteworthy that one of the main complainants against Judge Hale continues to resurface a 2016 courtroom audio recording, an issue that was resolved without any disciplinary action. So on behalf of a large number in the community, we appeal to the mayor and council to reappoint Judge Hale as city magistrate and please to investigate the magistrate commission in the mishandling of this matter. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Daisy. It's really wonderful to hear your voice. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
Jack Doyle? Jack Doyle?
He's on, Your Honor.
Mr. Doyle? Mr. Doyle? You have to press star six in order for us to hear you.
He's... No. Now he muted. Hit star six again, Mr. Doyle, and then you'd be willing to speak. There you go.
Go ahead. Go ahead. Mr. Clerk?
Your Honor, we show him unmuted here. It may be his actual phone that's muted. Just hit the mute button on your phone.
Okay, let's try it now. How are we?
We can hear you, Mr. Doyle. You have three minutes. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you much. Good evening, Mayor Romero and council members. Thank you for this opportunity to speak on the Reed Park Zoo expansion. My name is Jack Doyle. I'm a resident of Midtown Tucson. I've lived in Tucson for 27 years. Over those years, I have observed Tucsonians enjoying the benefits of Reed Park in many ways. For the past 12 years, I have volunteered at the Reed Park Zoo to assist with special events. During those times and other times, I've observed how much the zoo's residents and exhibits enchant and delight our younger Tucsonians. Reed Park is many things to many people. I would suggest that the heart of Reed Park is thus very different to different people. For golfers, it is the Randolph Golf Course and the driving range. For hobbyists and artists, it is the craft workshops. For sports enthusiasts, it is High Corbett Field and the tennis courts. For exercise, it is the perimeter walk or perhaps the Edith Ball Pool. For our canine friends, it is the dog park. For families, the Ramadas. For education and enrichment, it is the Reed Park Zoo. And for some, it is Barnum Hill. Barnum Hill is a destination for a few, whereas the Reed Park Zoo is a destination for the many. Our zoo is both an entertainment and an education experience. Our younger generations see a great variety of special creatures and learn of the need to foster conservation efforts, both at home and worldwide. Our zoo is most definitely a daily family destination. The planned expansion designated a pathway to Asia will be an iconic addition. Visitors will see red pandas, Malayan tigers, and a Komodo dragon, in addition to many other species. A day in the expanded Reed Park Zoo will definitely be a most memorable experience. In closing, let me note that Mr. Willis Barnum passed away in 1971. It took 22 years to honor him by christening Barnum Hill in 1993. Let us find another way to memorialize Mr. Barnum and his role in establishing Reed Park. Thank you, Mayor Romero and council, for the opportunity to speak. Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Doyle. Edward Laber?
He's on, Your Honor.
Edward Laber?
Hello?
Hello, Mr. Laber. We can hear you. You have three minutes.
Thank you, yeah. My name is Edward Labor. I've been a practicing attorney in Tucson, Arizona, for 36 years, almost all of that as a trial lawyer. And I sat on the Merit Selection Commission for the city court for eight years. My term was up in November. I can tell you that nobody on that commission ever sits there and wants to not recommend the reappointment of any magistrate. It's a very difficult decision to decide that. And the commission should be commended, and the members should be commended for having the courage to stand up and for their convictions that this Judge Hale has behaved in such a way that she should not be reappointed. I think it's important that when she came up for reappointment several years ago, when I was on the commission, I heard her story. I was very enthusiastic. I voted for her. I thought her presentation and where she's come from and how far she's come was quite impressive. But the problem with being a judge is you have to earn the confidence of the community every day. It's one thing to have a bad day, but when you're consistently not doing your job or treating people bad, it's a terrible reflection on the judiciary, and it erodes the confidence of the public. Judge Hale had her due process before the commission, and people are speaking up for her now. But the real issue here is not what is best for Judge Hale. The real question here is what is best for our community. We deserve the best judiciary that we can have. And fortunately, we have a very good bench in the city court. But she's not earned her reappointment. And so despite the fact that I enthusiastically supported her several years ago, I don't believe that she has earned her reappointment. And the attacks on the committee really are unfounded. It was a unanimous decision. All right. Well, that's all I have to say. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Labor. Cindy Hogan?
She's on, Your Honor.
Cindy Hogan?
Yes, can you all hear me?
Yes, we can, Ms. Hogan. Go ahead. You have three minutes.
Very well. Thank you. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Cindy Hogan, and I'm here as a concerned citizen to raise awareness about the Emergency Broadband Benefit Program, a $3.2 billion federal FCC initiative to provide qualifying households discounts on their internet service bills and an opportunity to receive a discount on the purchase of a computer or tablet. This program is in essence an expansion of the Federal Lifeline Program established during the Reagan administration in an effort back then to ensure that all citizens had access to phone service. in an effort back then to ensure that all citizens had access to phone service. Fully 80% of the households who are eligible for the existing Lifeline Benefit do not have it. I will say that again. 80% of the households who are eligible for the existing Lifeline Benefit do not have it. Most of them do not know the program exists, so they will not know about the expansion program either. There is no funding in the Emergency Broadband Benefit Program, or EDBP, for an awareness campaign. We lack a national bulletin board for publication of new benefit programs such as this. Word of such programs spreads haphazardly and the last to receive such information are those on the far side of the digital divide. I am taking part in a digital equity effort to reach households who are eligible for internet service and computing device discounts through the Emergency Broadband Benefit Program. Rollout of the EDBP for consumers is slated for mid-April of 2021, roughly six weeks from now. Consumers can go to the FCC website at FCC.gov/broadbandbenefit. I'll say it again. FCC website at FCC.gov/broadbandbenefit. It appears that funds will be available on a first-come, first-served basis to eligible applicants until the fund is depleted. This is a temporary solution to a severe digital divide in this country that has been in existence for a long time but was made starkly evident through the pandemic. Thousands of students in Arizona today do not have the resources for remote learning. Likewise, thousands of elderly persons in Arizona do not have the digital access to secure vaccine appointments or telemedicine visits. There is a movement afloat to make the EDBP a permanent program, but our goal at present is to make the public aware of its existence now. I urge mayor and council to participate in the effort to get word out about the EB program. I can be contacted at CindyHogan333@gmail.com. and I'm happy to answer anybody's questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Cindy. Really appreciate it. Guadalupe Castillo? Mr. Clerk, do we have Guadalupe Castillo with us?
Do not see her on, Your Honor.
Michael Harwin?
No on that one also, Your Honor.
Okay. Robin Mootser?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, but we don't know who it is.
Thank you, mayor and council. This is Robin Mootser. I speak for the trees and nature. Nature has significant social effects. It creates peace, unity, community, and something larger than ourselves. Mother trees nurture their young, connect with other trees and seedlings, which allow four times greater success. Trees, complex systems, send information into the network and kin. Defense signals protect all stresses when injured and dying and increase resilience for all. Limbs above and roots below the soil act as antennas, sharing information, communications, cooperation with each other in relationships while transporting carbon, water, and nutrition. Infinite biological pathways allow multiple trees to function as a single organism. Removal or death of one tree too many and the whole system collapses. Man-made pulsed, data-modulated, radio-frequency electromagnetic microwave radiation is harmful to trees. Damage afflicted on trees by cell towers of any size of any G usually starts on one side extending to the whole tree over time. One additional transmitter, an additional frequency, or excessive output beyond that needed for five bars telecommunications personal wireless service can change the situation significantly for the worse. Each antenna projects a known toxic pollutant, which is a public safety hazard. For five bars telecommunications service and quiet enjoyment of our streets, all we need is negative 85 decibel milliwatts for any single carrier-specific frequency band. If we set that as a local standard, we can preserve the health of our trees instead of poisoning them 24/7. We must safeguard the trees and plants and they have a mutual protection effect for each other, provide shade and the ability to be outside on our increasingly hot days in Tucson. Trees protect us from heat, neutralize pollution, and create oxygen for all of life. Microwave radiation assault on trees causes thinner cell walls, damaged leaves, and excessive emissions of volatile compounds from the tree and plant. Man-made microwave pollution constitutes an unnecessary stress to our trees, which are critical for pollinator health and our ability to grow food. With the second-largest bee population in Pima County, one of the largest biodiversity sites of flora and fauna in the world, the UNESCO Gastronomy Site, and the Sonoran Desert, our area demands the highest standard of protection. Our area is a national and international treasure, larger in scope than the protected area of Lake Tahoe Basin, where there's a lawsuit right now to stop the construction of additional cell towers and install fiber optics to the homes instead. That makes wireless a trickle in Lake Tahoe, emitting primarily from home Wi-Fi routers. All big data is transported only in the most efficient manner via fiber optic cables. Instead of radiation poisoning, let's choose fiber optics, which does not impact our valuable trees and plants and pollinators. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mootser. Michael Bloom?
Yes, Your Honor.
Michael Bloom? Mr. Bloom? Mr. Clerk, is he on mute?
Yes, Your Honor, he needs to press star six.
Hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead, Mr. Bloom.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can, Mr. Bloom. You have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Mike Bloom. I'm a criminal defense attorney. I've been practicing in Tucson for 44 years. I am very familiar with city court and the practice in city court. I have been the host of the DUI seminar for 30 years. I have been involved in seminars. I've been involved in the process for all that time. What I want to tell you is this. Lawyers do not come forward and criticize a judge easily. They don't do it willy-nilly. When lawyers come forward to the commission and raise questions about a judge, they have to put their name on it and they do it with risk. They risk that they will be retaliated against and that their clients will be retaliated against. In this case, my understanding is that over 30 attorneys, public defenders, private attorneys, and prosecutors have all come forward to raise concerns about Judge Hale. She may be a wonderful person and there are many people apparently to say that she is, but it is really important when you're, especially in city court, when you are dealing with many people that are unrepresented, you are dealing with people that may be indigent, that may not be sophisticated. These people need somebody with a judicial temperament that's appropriate. And there is a concern, obviously, that that's not happening here. The commission had no motive in this case, no reason to reach the conclusion they did other than to make our court system and our city a better place. And I hope the council will recognize that the people that came forward here did so and showed some courage to try and make our city a better place. And that's the reason for that recommendation. Thank you, mayor and council. ...a better place. And that's the reason for that recommendation. Thank you, mayor and council.
Your, Your Honor.
Your, Your Honor.
Stan Lindstedt?
Yes.
So this is Stan.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Lindstedt.
I wanted to thank, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
I wanted to thank the mayor and the council members for what a great job you do. I know you're all dedicated. You've made Tucson a wonderful place to live. So thank you very much. Sadly, though, the real loss of Reed Park occurred when the Colorado Rockies flattened many beautiful tree-covered acres for practice fields that were used only for a few seasons and then abandoned. Understandably, I believe that set the stage for much of the opposition to any further expansion into the park. However, I think it's really important to note that the zoo is really one of us and importantly, the result of expansion will not be further flattened and closed fields. The other thing I wanted to mention is that the zoo is part of a much larger community of zoological parks that are doing a world of good. Anyone who's visited the Grand Canyon is struck not only with the majesty of the canyon, but also the wonder of our largest North American bird, the California condor, an animal that would have been extinct decades ago but for the intervention of zoological societies. While Reed Park Zoo is not involved with condors, I'm really proud to say that our Reed Park Zoo is a leading institution in saving Chilean flamingos from their possible extinction. However, the reason I wanted to speak with this group is to present you with a challenge. And that challenge is, the next time you visit the zoo, I challenge you to look at a group of animals in particular, human children. The pure joy and excitement of watching young people running from habitat to habitat, seeing and learning about elephants, meerkats, giraffes, anteaters, et cetera, is truly inspirational. This encounter may likely be the initial event of a lifetime appreciation of biodiversity. These future voters and decision-makers learn in a truly thrilling setting the catastrophic consequences of habitat degradation, including climate change. I can say with absolute confidence, there isn't a single family that comes to the zoo, even if they do so just to ride the carousel, that doesn't leave with a much greater appreciation for the zoological world in which we live. For those reasons, I urge you to honor the voice of the voters and endorse the expansion of the zoo so that it can continue as a jewel in the crown of the old pueblo. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you so much. I really appreciate it. That comes to the conclusion of our 30 minutes for call to the audience. We do have to move on to the next item because I do know that council member Fimares really wants to participate in this item. So we are going to move on to item 10 after call to the audience. So, Mr. Clerk, we're on to item 10. Can you please read the heading?
City magistrate, reappointment of city magistrate and fixing compensation, ordinance number 11825.
City manager's communication number 77 dated March 9th is received into and made part of the record. Mr. Clerk, you are requested to read ordinance 11825 by number and title only.
Ordinance number 11825 relating to city magistrates reappointing Geraldine S. Hale as city magistrate to serve another four-year term as magistrate of the city court, fixing compensation, setting effective date, and declaring an emergency.
So before we go on to council's pleasure, I do see Mr. Mike Rankin's hand up.
Thank you, mayor. I just wanted to read one correction into the record, both for this item and then for the subsequent later item now for Judge Millian. Both of those ordinances were written as if the ordinance is approved would begin tonight and run for a four-year term. Actually, in each instance, the magistrates have a period of unexpired portion of their term is still left. And in Judge Hale's case, her current term actually runs until August 16th. So if the ordinance is approved, we will correct the dates because the new term would begin after the current term expires and run for four years from that date. Same with Judge Millian. So I wanted to put that on the record and we will correct the dates later as needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rankin. Council member Fimares?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We received many calls on this issue and we had several meetings. Jerry, and some of that, I wanted, Jerry S. Hale was appointed as a city magistrate in 2011 to fill the remainder of the term of her predecessor who left the bench. Jerry S. Hale has also been reappointed as magistrate twice in 2013 and 2017. Judge Hale is supported by representing Judge Tony Rojas, attorney Margot Cowan, Pastor Dee Grady Scott of Grace Temple Baptist Church, Annie Sykes of the NAACP, Connie Borkins of the Urban League, Reverend Amos Lewis of Rising Star Baptist Church, and many members of our community as well as attorneys and those who work in our legal branches of government. I have also received many letters from our community in support of the reappointment of Judge Hale. I move to approve ordinance 11825 and reappoint Gerald S. Hale as city magistrate.
Okay. There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Just very briefly want to speak in support of the motion. Is, sorry, I jumped in.
Okay. Go ahead, council member. You just jumped in, that's good.
Thank you. Yeah, I've also heard from a lot of folks, including folks who have served on the commission, who understand the dynamics, people who've represented the Pima County Bar Association, even former chair. So I, and, you know, I think it's worth, I don't think it needs to be part of the motion, but there's some suggestions on just reviewing the policies and procedures of the commission, what guidance they're getting. And so, you know, we can follow up, I would hope, with the attorney and the chief magistrate to make sure that everybody has, you know, good guidance and, you know, understands what's expected in terms of these kinds of evaluations. But I'm in support of the motion.
Conquer, any others? All righty. What is the pleasure of the council?
Yes, Your Honor.
Councilman Cunningham?
I have my video up tonight because my netto choppy, so. I just wanted to mention that I've, someone whose grandmother grew up on the bench and was one of the first women on the bench. Was rated like the lowest lawyer, the lowest rated by bar association numbers a few years in a row. So I kind of thought about this one and what my grandma wanted me to do. And one of the things is, is that later on in her career, she had some of the highest ratings. So I think this is a process and I think part of when we appoint someone to the judiciary, we have to know that they're not really politicians. They're supposed to be impartial and they're there for their clients, not the lawyers. So I hope that that happens. I hope that the situation improves, but I wish Judge Hale the best in the next, in her reappointment.
Yes, thank you, council member Cunningham. I too want to speak up. I've been on the Tucson City Council for 12 years and as mayor one and a little bit more than one. And I was there when Judge Hale was appointed. As a matter of fact, I was very happy to make the motion to appoint Judge Hale to be city magistrate at that time. We have been confronted with many different careers, the lack of access and opportunity afforded to women, LGBTQ plus communities and people of color. And I was very happy and continue to appreciate and support the reappointment of Judge Hale. I believe that she, her voice is important in our city courts. And I agree with council member Cunningham that after three times being appointed in this particular, really, to be honest, I've never seen this type of campaign against an individual at, for city courts. And I would like to be able to review exactly what every step of the process was. And, you know, I think it was very unfortunate that there was such a blatant campaign against Judge Hale, but I still believe in her and in her voice. And I believe that she deserves to be reappointed to the bench. With that, there is a motion and a second. If there is not any further discussion...
With that, there is a motion and a second. If there is not any further discussion, can we go to roll call, please?
Mr. Fimbras?
Aye.
Ms. Ulrich?
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham?
Aye.
Mayor Omero?
Aye.
Mr. Kazachik?
Aye.
Mrs. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Santa Cruz?
Aye.
Ordinance 11825 passes by a vote of 7-0. Thank you so much, Councilmember Fimbras, and thank you for for waiting for call to the audience. Now, what we're going to do is we're going to move back into item 7.
Consent agenda items A through E.
Reports from the city manager on the consent agenda are received into and made part of the record. Mr. Clerk, you are requested to read the consent agenda items.
Your Honor, on this evening's consent agenda, item A is approval of minutes. Item B is an intergovernmental agreement with Pima County for the Sullivan Jackson Employment Center Continuum of Care Grant, ECO Permanent Supportive Housing Program. Item C is Tucson Code amending Chapter 20 prohibiting the racing of vehicles, definitions and penalties. This item will be considered separately at the request of the mayor. Item D is transportation approving the pilot program for shared mobility services, mobility devices. This item will be considered separately to clarify the direction from the study session. Item E is Tucson Code amending Chapter 16 relating to the neighborhood preservation ordinance adding specific temperature requirements. As the extended consent agenda, Your Honor, appropriate motion would be to approve items A, B, and E.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Mr. Cunningham?
Aye.
Mrs. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Kazachik?
I think he's on mute.
Mr. Kazachik? Ms. Santa Cruz?
Aye.
Ms. Ulrich?
Aye.
Mr. Fimbras?
Absent, excused.
He's left. Mr. Kazachik?
Aye.
Thank you. And Mayor Omero?
Aye. The items on the consent agenda are approved by a vote of 6-0. Mr. Clerk?
First item to be considered separately, Your Honor, was item C, Tucson Code amending Chapter 20 prohibiting the racing of vehicles, definitions and penalties.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. I particular item because I think this is an important issue to talk about publicly. I absolutely 100% support the the amendment of Chapter 20 and would love to be able to invite either Chief Magnus or Mr. Ortega just to talk a little bit about the background. This is an important issue that has been happening throughout our community. There's been drag racing throughout the community, very specifically on this east side of our community. And so we have seen traffic fatalities because of these. We have seen racers on the street that put other people in danger, and it is a public nuisance. So I just wanted to be able to talk a little bit more about the details, Mr. Ortega, and talk about the 30 days that we're trying to approve on this item in terms of impoundment, and any further details about cost and consequences of this type of behavior.
Sure, Mayor. And again, reinforcing the concerns that that you and the council members have expressed. I know that you have not only had issues that have been brought to your attention on the east side, but also downtown. I know you specifically and Councilmember Kazachik have been hearing from the residents. So we're really trying to strengthen, you know, and give more tools, if you will, in the toolbox. I know that Chief Magnus is on the on the call. I'd like him to talk about some of the efforts that they're going forward and how that all relates to the revisions to the ordinance. So, Chris?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If you can hear me all right, I take, I hope. Okay. Madam Mayor, members of the council, and Mr. Manager, thank you so much for considering this item. I have to tell you that, it may surprise you, but in the past five-plus years that I've been here now, I don't think I've ever received as many complaints around a single item as as the street racing that we're seeing now in the community. And frankly, they come from community members throughout the city because this kind of street racing is happening pretty much in every ward. Any place there are straightaway roads, particularly at night, late at night, we're seeing this kind of street racing. It is incredibly hazardous behavior, but it is also, and I can't emphasize the hazard enough because, as you can imagine, because this is on public streets, there are innocent motorists that get caught up in this, and we've heard from many of them who say it's just a terrifying experience. But the other piece of it is that this kind of racing is extremely noisy and disruptive to people who live nearby. So a lot of the complaints are about the noise. And again, we've heard this throughout the city. So a lot of it, of course, out east, but frankly, also along Speedway, Grant, Broadway, you know, they're all, it's all over town. So what this does, just very basically, is the city used to have an ordinance that allowed for this. In fact, there is still an ordinance on the books that allows for the impounding of vehicles associated with this. But the problem is that the ordinance has not been updated to reflect the requirements of state law in terms of due process associated with getting getting your vehicle back. And what happens if it's somebody else's vehicle that was involved, and they need to get it back, and all those kind of considerations. So what this does is it brings our ordinance essentially in line with the state's requirements associated with this kind of of impound. And you're correct, Madam Mayor, it covers a 30-day impound. Should make clear that these are not, you know, many of these folks doing this racing, perhaps we have an image from movies or something that it's just like high school kids or something. It is actually a very, people are doing it have, they clearly have money because these cars are high value. They've been modified extensively. So there's a lot of money involved in this. And, you know, we've talked, there are responsible racing clubs out there. They've met with us. They were even at one of our press conferences. They they do not condone this activity at all on public streets. They believe it should be done on approved tracks. And so they've also joined in supporting this ordinance. So I'm happy to answer any questions you might have, but that is the essence of it.
Thank you, Chief. I agree with you. This is reckless behavior that endangers the life of other drivers and pedestrians and cyclists alike. And, you know, this behavior should not be tolerated. I was wondering, is 30 days impoundment serious enough for for this type of reckless behavior?
I think probably the city attorney could perhaps better speak to that than I can because I don't know what legal, if 30 days is something that is the maximum that's allowed under the existing ordinance or even under state law. So I'll refer to him for that.
Thank you, Chief and Mayor, members of the council. Yes, I wouldn't recommend going beyond 30 days so that we can remain within the constitutional limits of what we can do in the in the context of our authority. I do think it's an important message to send, though, that in addition to the penalties they would face under our street racing ordinance and this impound, if it's approved, that there are, in some instances, felony charges that could apply to the behavior. And so this is just one element of a of a larger enforcement issue.
Think we may have lost the mayor temporarily there. Mayor, can you hear us?
Mr. Manager, we just lost ours in the Ward 4 office, too, and just came back online. But Councilmember Kazachik, go ahead with your question. I missed the last piece of the conversation, but I see your hand up, and the mayor is not here, so I'll keep us moving forward.
Well, yeah, okay, thanks. I just wanted to publicly commend the legitimate track owners who have stepped into this and, number one, condemned the behavior, number two, offered an alternative, you know, offered an alternative to these guys to come out and race at the track. And in fact, they even offered discounts to come out and do it. TPD's been involved in advocating and participating in those legitimate races. And and so it's, you know, it's a, obviously, a community safety issue. It's also just the aesthetics, as Chris pointed out. Down in the downtown core where the where the engine noise reverberates off the buildings, it's just, you know, people can't sleep at 2 o'clock in the morning with this going on. So I want to thank you, Chris, for your help on this and working and reaching out to the legitimate track owners to to also play a part in being a solution. Would that I make a motion that we adopt this item?
Without seeing the mayor yet, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this item? All right. If not, do you want to wait for the mayor, Roger?
It shows that she is back on. Madam Mayor?
I am. I had to get on my phone. Thank you so much, Vice Mayor. You're doing a great job.
We have a motion and a second on this, and there was no discussion. So the baton is back to you, ma'am.
All righty. Thank you so much. I really appreciate your taking over. So without any further discussion, do we have to go to roll call, Mr. Clerk?
You can do a voice vote, Your Honor.
All righty. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any against? Hearing none. Motion carries. Thank you so much. Mr. Clerk, let's go to the second item on consent to consider, be considered separately.
Your Honor, this is item D, transportation improving the pilot program for shared mobility devices.
Okay. I know that Mr. Rankin has additional language to include.
I'm sorry, Mayor. I couldn't hear the question.
That you wanted to include additional language in consent agenda item D, I believe.
Yeah, Roger, if you could help with additional direction that was provided during the study session from the motion.
Your Honor, we've also lost Councilmember Santa Cruz, so she was not on during the last vote, so that vote would have been a 5-0 vote.
Okay.
So the motion was, during the study session, was to approve the pilot program continuing and then going out for an RFP. The RFP was to expand the, to include the expansion of opportunity zones and with a focus on strict compliance. Additionally, the RFP was to include the language regarding the being able to detect the difference between asphalt and concrete. That's that's what I got. If the council has anything additional for this discussion. I've recovered it.
I think you're good.
So that's, we we will make sure the record reflects additions, and you can act on the item without having.
All righty. Thank you. So can we have a motion to approve item D, which is approving the pilot program for the shared mobility devices?
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Thank you, everyone. Item 8.
Agreement with the Community Investment Corporation to facilitate the Emergency Rental Assistance Program, resolution number 23307.
City manager's communication 76 dated March 9th is received into and made part of the record. Mr. Clerk, you are requested to read resolution 23307 by number and title only.
Resolution number 23307 relating to an agreement approving an agreement with Community Investment Corporation and the City of Tucson to provide emergency rental and utility assistance to households impacted by COVID-19 and declaring an emergency.
What is the council's pleasure? Councilmember Santa Cruz?
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we accept the resolution related to this agreement and that be in direction to the Community Investment Corporation, working partnership with the Sunnyside Foundation to allocate no less than $2 million towards emergency rental and utility assistance.
Second. So there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you so much. Item 9.
Zoning C 91918 Houghton Reserve, Houghton and Broadway, SR to R1 and C1, ordinance adoption, ordinance number 11822.
City manager's communication number 71 dated March 9th is received into and made part of the record. This is a request to rezon the site located near the northeast corner of North Houghton Road and East Broadway. The project proposes approximately 227 lots for one- and two-story, single-family homes developed using flexible lot development provisions and two commercial lots. The zoning examiner recommends approval of R1 and C1 zoning. Staff recommends approval of R1 and C1 zoning and adoption of the ordinance, which provides conditions for the rezoning. Is the applicant representative present?
Mayor, members of the council, Carrie Sylvan, representing the applicant. I also have with me Lisa Haskin with Meritage Homes, who worked diligently with me and the neighbors and wore to office, office rezoning, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much, Carrie. Are you agreeable to the proposed requirements?
Yes, we are.
Excellent. Well, Mr. Clerk, you are requested to read ordinance 11822 by number and title only.
Ordinance number 11822 relating to zoning, amending zoning district boundaries in the area located north and east of the intersection at North Houghton Road and East Broadway Boulevard in KC 91918, Houghton Reserve, Houghton and Broadway, SR to R1 and C1, and setting an effective date.
What is the council's pleasure?
Your Honor, we actually did most of the discussion and work on this about a year ago. This is the final piece to it. Want to thank the High Board Neighbors, Silverado Hills, just about it. We, we, this was one of the few ones that was pretty tricky, and we built almost consensus on it. So this includes 100-foot bumpers to the north and some other things that are just, it's the way that that development should go. So we're proud of the project. I want to reiterate one other thing. We are taking a portion of the impact fees to purchase 13 acres east of this project from TUSD, get into undisturbed open space. So, so I'm kind of excited about that. Therefore, I move that we pass and adopt 11822.
So there is a motion. May I hear a second?
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see Councilmember Ulrich.
I'd like to offer a substitute motion. Just kidding. I'm just totally.
I'm just totally-
Oh!
Councilmember Ulick, it's really glad to have, I'm really glad to have you back.
Your dog is gonna bite you.
Oh, I, I, I'm not seeing Councilmember Cunningham's face, but oh my God, it was like a two-year thing. It's a wonderful way to finish off the meeting, Karen. So hearing no further discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Cunningham?
You know, I've been thinking about it. Aye.
Ms. Ulick?
Aye.
Mayor Omero?
Aye.
Ms. Santa Cruz?
Aye.
Mr. Kazachik?
Aye.
Mrs. Lee?
Aye.
Ordinance 11822 passes by a vote of five zero. Congratulations. Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
And congratulations, Councilmember Cunningham, for that open space. It's wonderful and great for the neighbors. All righty, item 10, we have gone through. Item 11.
City magistrate, reappointment of city magistrate and fixing compensation, ordinance number 11824.
City Manager's Communication Number 73, dated March 9th, is received into and made part of the record. Mr. Clerk, you are requested to read Ordinance 11824 by number and title only.
Ordinance Number 11824, relating to city magistrates, reappointing Wendy Million as city magistrate to serve another four-year term as magistrate of the Tucson City Court, fixing compensation, setting an effective date, and declaring an emergency. And Your Honor, the, the same notice that Mr. Rankin gave for item 10 also will apply to item 11.
Thank you. Noted?
So moved.
All righty, so there's a motion?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? I would just like to thank Judge Million for her years of service to our city and the residents of our city. I can personally say how wonderful her work and amazing dedication to the Domestic Violence Court and being able to create that court for the city of Tucson and what it has done for victims of domestic violence is unbelievable. Thank you for your years of service. Thank you for your creativity and thank you for being so diligent in fighting for victims of domestic violence. With that, what is the council, well, we have the roll call. Let's go to roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Ms. Santa-
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham?
Aye.
Ms. Ulick?
Aye.
Mrs. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Kazachik?
Aye.
Mayor Omero?
Aye. Ordinance 11824 passes by a vote of six zero. Item 12.
City magistrate, reappointment of city magistrate and fixing compensation, ordinance number 11823.
City Manager's Communication Number 72, dated March 9th, is received into and made part of the record. Mr. Clerk, you are requested to read Ordinance 11823 by number and title only.
Ordinance Number 11823, relating to city magistrates appointing as a city magistrate of the City of Tucson, fixing compensation and setting an effective date.
Councilmember Santa Cruz?
Mayor, I'm that we appoint Lisa Surio as a city magistrate for the city of Tucson.
Second. There is a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Mr. Kazachik?
Aye.
Ms. Santa Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Omero?
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham?
Aye.
Mrs. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Ulick?
Aye.
Ordinance 11823 passes by a vote of six zero and congratulations to the newly appointed magistrate, Surio. Item 13.
Adjournment?
Council will stand adjourned. The next regularly scheduled meeting will be on Tuesday, March 23rd, 2021, at or after 5:30 PM. Thank you all so much and thank you all for your hard work.